Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the July 5, 2022, special Brevard County Commission meeting. And with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, for calling this meeting. Fellow Commissioners, thank you for showing up. And as always, staff going past the 5:00 hour, I greatly appreciate that. Got three goals here. First of all, deal with, the county attorney's office has some family health issues I think we can potentially help with here as a board. I think we need to successfully navigate an interim period that's coming up, as well as make plans for a successor. So I've broken that down into three different parts. I am going to have some motions, which I will pass down here, so you can follow along. First of all, Abby Jornby has gone above and beyond. She continues to do so despite having pressing family medical issues. She selfishly, selflessly planned on providing a 60-day notice. And I personally spoke with her, and she indicated that if the board agreed not to require said 60-day notice in her contract, she would be able to assist her family much sooner. So I do have a motion. It's the first one listed in there. And the motion would be, then if there's any discussion, move to accept Abigail Jornby's voluntary resignation effective upon the conclusion of this special meeting of the board and authorized by Section 3, Paragraph D of her employment contract, hereby relinquishing her from the duties and obligations of the position, discontinuing the benefits granted to her of said position, and allowing for payout over accrued annual and sick leave as provided for her under Section 6 of her contract. So that's the first motion. Madam Chair.
My second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a discussion.
Okay.
This is all kind of a surprise to me. Do we have, what do we have as an alternative when she walks out the door? Because we have, we have an awful lot of
I think motion two.
Business coming to the table here. Okay, so Christine's willing to stay then? Where are you, Christine? Where'd she go? Oh, there you are. Sorry. So you've agreed to stay, obviously, for whatever time is necessary? Okay, good. Okay, well, then I'm good then.
Okay. All right. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To follow that up, and in recognition of Ms. Jornby's hard work, I have a resolution. And again, I only have 12 of these that are, so this is pretty important. This is a resolution on behalf of the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners, thanking Abigail Jornby for her service to Brevard County, Florida. With your permission, Madam Chair, I'd like to go ahead and read that.
Of course.
Whereas Ms. Abigail Jornby graduated with a JD degree from the University of Florida in 2001, and whereas Ms. Jornby has been a member of the Florida Bar since 2001, and whereas Ms. Jornby has been admitted to the U.S. District Court for both the Southern and Middle Districts of Florida, and whereas Ms. Jornby has worked in service of Brevard County since 2019, providing insightful and practical legal counsel to a number of county departments, including but not limited to utility services, planning development, and parks and rec. And whereas Ms. Jornby became a board certified city, county, and local government law in 2020, and whereas Ms. Jornby served as the deputy county attorney since early 2021, who was selected for the position of county attorney based on her dedication to county, extensive experience in legal field, and history of exceptional performance. And whereas Ms. Jornby has skillfully represented Brevard County on a number of critical issues, including redistricting and the charter cap case. And whereas Ms. Jornby has diligently and consistently provided expert legal advice to the board and county staff. And whereas Ms. Jornby has been valued asset to the county and an exceptional leader of a thriving county attorney's office. Now therefore, be it resolved that Ms. Abigail Jornby's expert opinions and joyful attitude will be sorely missed, and that she is wished the best of luck with all her future endeavors, and that she is leaving with gratitude and appreciation of the Board of County Commissioners done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the 5th day of July 2022. That's the resolution, Madam Chair.
All right. Want a motion to pass?
Yeah, a motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I'm going to leave this one up to Ms. Jornby. Would you like a picture?
Sure.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd invite all of us.
I'm going up there.
It's one of my 12.
You're 12 for the year?
Yes.
I did the rest for me.
I will come down for yours.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Commissioner Smith was ahead, as he is most of the time. But we need to successfully navigate through this interim period. So not on behalf of the board, let me be very clear. But the first person I called was Eden Bentley. And I said, I would love to have you back, but should you come back, I would lose all respect for you. And she, of course, immediately wished us the best, but had travel plans. So the best to Eden, but we'd be stupid not to ask for the best. Next was Scott Knox, but he's too busy trying to bill taxpayers out of millions of dollars, so he got thrown off the list. So the, yeah, I don't want to preview where I'm going with this, but more to come. The qualifications, we're looking for, obviously, someone with a JD, a member of the bar in good standing, who's familiar with Brevard County government and the pending litigation, Malabar Scrub Jay and the Rinaldi case. And we have such a person, we're lucky enough, Christine Chevrack. She was honorably, honorable retirement as a lieutenant colonel in the United States Army after 22 years. As impressive as that, she has a law degree from the University of Florida. She's a member in good standing in the Florida Bar since 2002, admitted to the Supreme Court of the United States, and the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Armed Forces. So guys, it's pretty good when the backup has a pedigree that's great. We're fortunate to have her. So I have a motion, and the motion would be, I'd move to designate Christine Chevrack the interim county attorney, with all the authorities, obligations, and compensation granted, and the most recent contract for the position until such time as a formal appointing of an individual to that position can be performed. That's the motion, Madam Chair.
I'll be honored to second that one.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, I think. I know you're going to be busy, but thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. And we'll do our best in this transition period. We're going to do candidate briefing on board. It was a pleasure serving for Abby while she was here, and I can speak for the whole team. But I know we're going to have a joint effort to keep things going well in the interim. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're very happy to have the opportunity to support you. And we're counting on you, obviously. And we, we know that you're going to do a terrific job.
All right.
Finally, the successor. Within the past 18 months, the board went through a fully advertised and competitive job search, and we interviewed another highly capable and intelligent candidate. That individual's name is Morris Richardson, who finished a very close second. His current contract as the city attorney of West Melbourne expires August 31, 2022. In my opinion, and I'm just throwing this out there, he would be the best candidate for a seamless transition, as well as to run that office for the long term. So I have a motion here, and in the light of the board's previous vetting and the recent determination that he was a highly qualified individual to serve as county attorney, I move to appoint a negotiation committee comprised of HR Director Jerry Visco, Budget Director Jill Hayes, and the chairwoman Christine Zonka. The purpose of the committee shall be to approach and offer the position of county attorney to Mr. Richardson, and if he is agreeable, negotiate with Mr. Richardson a contract to serve as the county attorney. Should Mr. Richardson not accept, or negotiations not be reached, an acceptable conclusion, this motion includes authorization for HR Director Visco to advertise the position through whatever necessary means to procure a qualified candidate for the board's review and consideration. That's the motion, Madam Chair.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Tobias.
I'll second that. I was a little worried there when you started mentioning Mr. Visco. I thought maybe you were going to elevate him to be our next, be our next attorney. Not that he's not qualified, because he is.
No, I gotta tell you, I kept telling Frank, you know, Frank, you are an attorney. He would just laugh at me.
Yeah, but
And he's ignoring you now.
Jerry's a tank commander over there.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I mean, that's
I just thought it'd be kind of fun, make him do dual roles, and deal with us, but yeah.
Save us some money.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Oh, for a second.
We have a vote.
You did.
Did you second?
I did.
Okay. And I'll just say, the first thing I did was call Morris to see if he would even be interested in, you know, trying to be respectful of his current position with the city of West Melbourne. And he said, you know, he just needed some time and time to consider it. And I think he's trying to be thoughtful of that current, you know, place of employment. So I would be very excited to have Mr. Richardson. He was my first choice initially when this came through, not, not any dig on Abby or anything like that, but just because I know his work history in this county and, and his work history with West Melbourne. So I think he'd be an excellent candidate, and the county would be lucky to have him. So I'd be happy to be a part of that negotiating team. All right. So with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, one more thing.
Yes, Commissioner Tobias?
This is a request of not only yourself, but the rest of the negotiations team. I certainly hope that we would offer him a fair and market-driven contract. Here's the ask. And we had a great deal with Abigail. She was working under market rates. And I think that should we offer this new candidate a market rate, I think all the executives, and when I say executives, we have two, we have a county attorney and a county manager should be paid at a market rate. And I did not discuss this with the county manager, and it's more important than just our current county manager. He's not going to be there forever. And when we, we or future commissions go ahead and, and make a determination, it will be much more palatable to offer somebody a nominal increase instead of what the increase we would have to offer them right now. Recall that if we pay the, to put this in perspective, if we paid market rate for our county attorney and market rate for our county manager, we would still be paying less than what the port is paying the captain. And that's not a dig at Commissioner-elect Ben Volkenberg. Congratulations on your election. But it would be, I think, sound to have equitable pay, market pay for both our executives. That's just my two cents. I didn't want to be part of that committee, but I think you'll do a great job. And thank you for taking that role.
Commissioner Pritchett?
That's why I think it'd be such a good idea to have Frank do both the
Well, yeah. We can get two for one.
All right. We might kill him. That's, all right. Are you through, Commissioner Tobias?
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right. All right. Moving on to public comments. Catherine Vecchio. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me here. This is my first time speaking to you. And I wanted to thank Kathy Lively for answering all my emails with all of my basic questions. I really appreciate that. So after last night's 4th of July celebrations, it really pushed me to come forward and talk to you. And in all of your districts, there's something that happens annually. We have a migratory bird called the lease turn that visits and nests in every single one of your districts. So currently, we have a ground colony set up in Satellite Beach. Last night, the, what I had to endure to protect that colony, I really don't look forward to having to do that for future, for the future. So I'm not sure how much you are aware of it. And what I'm looking to you for guidance and direction, how we can prepare for next year. I've been recommended by Mike McCrery to speak to Eels Properties. We have Satellite Beach, who's a very forward-thinking, thinking community, doing some due diligence on a piece of property on the shoreline. And, but I think there's a bigger picture here that, and even Tourism Development Council, I spoke with them, the beach committee. But my interpretation of what the beach committee was and what it really is, is two different things. I thought it was there to help with preservation and restoration of beach, but it is, beach re-nourishment. But there's also a grant program within that, that allows for anything to help within the lagoon and to renew the nitrogen load. But what I feel like we need is something to give back to the Indian River, what we've lost through tourism. And as tourism continues to grow, these little guys continue to come back, and they will come back. And I brought you each a brochure, if you're interested in seeing that. And I also brought some, some pictures that we use when we do our outreach. We have a very active group of seasoned volunteers that hit the beach every day. On the weekends, we were out there through 4th of July. We're educating people. And what we're finding is it's a lack of understanding. So we have the baneties, we have the sea turtles, but we have these little guys, the lease turn, and we also have the black skimmer. So you know where they, you know where they set up their, their nests now? Rooftops. And so back in the day, our rooftops were gravel. So they found over time, every time a technician walked on the roof, the membrane was busted. So then the roofs leaked. So now they're switching. They're switching to a different rooftop, which now the birds don't have anywhere to nest. So I know I don't have much time. So if there is an opportunity, I look forward to getting you all in one place. But if there's some way I could get some direction from you, and how we can prepare for next year's migration season. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would say just reach out to each one of us individually. I'm sure we would all love to hear what you have to say, and give you the time that's necessary.
Okay.
So just reach out to each one of our offices.
Okay. That sounds great. Would you like these brochures?
Yes.
Who do I hand them to? Okay.
Thank you, sir. So you didn't mention it specifically, but you're, I guess what I'm doing is reading between the lines, but you were indicating that the July 4th fireworks probably disrupted the
Yes.
The birds and the other animals, as well as domesticated animals and horses and everything else.
And the humans, yeah. So I forgot to say that I am a shorebird monitor for the Florida Shorebird Alliance. And I've been doing it for a few years. I'm also the current president of the Space Coast Chapter of Master Naturalists. So we are out here doing all we can to help protect and educate. So last night's occurrence, what happened? Satellite Beach was very responsive. You know, once, you know, the calls were made. FWC was redirecting its calls, but residents were still going on the beach, shooting fireworks off. We, it's sea turtle nesting season. Okay, so that, that we know, right? But these birds just totally get overlooked within our county. And, and I think it's time that they, they get the same protections, and they do, under the Migratory Species Act, and they are state protected. So, so last night, I tried to talk to the residents. I got laughed at. And, and, you know, like the Satellite Beach said to me, goes, well, if you don't do it, who else can do it? I'm not going to give up. But I think that we all are players in this, and we all have to, we all have to come up with some alternative for them. And nesting season will be over end of September. They head back down to South America, and then they come back in March. I call the landing, I call the rooftop of the Ugali Wind Dixie as the Atlanta International Airport, because they come in by the thousands, and they swirl around, and then they disperse. We don't know where they go. They are, they don't have the technology of the little radar little chips put in them yet. They do banding on some of them, but some, we have not seen any in any of the colonies we are surveying. So it's a very, it's an amazing site. And right now, currently, they are starting to prepare to stage to return. It's too early. You know, the biologist who is from our region, she is concerned because of loss of habitat and interference and what they, they do naturally. There's nothing we can do. Like, somebody asked me, did you, did you attract them to that site in Satellite Beach? Like, yeah, right. I just said, here you go. You know, I didn't attract them. They found it because they knew it was suitable for them. So, and it was the largest colony at one point in the state, but now there's another larger one. So we can't claim that anymore. But, but I would appreciate the opportunity to talk to you all.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Dontavious?
Good evening. Dontavious Smith, Cocoa, Florida. Recently, two months ago, while I'm vacationing in Rio de Janeiro, Brazil, should have been worrying about indulging in some of the most beautiful and exotic women that Brazil has to offer. I didn't do that. While sitting in my bungalow, I was really concerned about the Brevard County citizens. And I know, while I was in Colombia, in Cartagena, I sent an email to all district commissioners, as well as the Charter Review Committee. I sent an email proposing to end homelessness and the affordable housing issue in Brevard County. Now, with that being said, I know Commissioner Tobias got a lot of hack for attending the religious freedom group that was offering, well, not offering, because they didn't offer anything either, a sit down and have a discussion about the affordable housing and impoverished issues in Brevard County. No one had a plan. No one had an approach. Where, what are we going to do? But I had one. So I'm going to refer to the email that I sent to all of you. On May 16, 2022, at 9:25 a.m., Cartagena, Colombia time. Good day, commissioners. Hope all is well. Again, this is Dontavious Tatum, Mayor Smith. And this morning, I'm reaching out to those of you on the Brevard County Board of Commissioners and the Charter Review Committee to propose a strategic plan to end homelessness and the affordable housing crisis we're in. I've been working on this proposal throughout the duration of my vacation in Rio de Janeiro, Brazil, and Cartagena, Colombia. After receiving a plethora of phone calls and emails from citizens asking me, as a potential county commissioner for District 2, what are my ideas and approaches to this serious issue? I felt it was my duty to come up with a plan that our underprivileged citizens can prosper from, but most importantly, as a participant. Living below the poverty line in Brevard County since graduating from Florida Agriculture and Mechanical University in 2008, and running for mayor of Cocoa twice, I understand the frustration and the disappointments our citizens are showing. Though I don't have the resources, manpower, nor the budget to allocate funds towards a project this magnitude, Brevard County does. I sincerely pray that you understand the possibilities that this proposal program can not only have our citizens in Brevard, but have citizens in the United States adapt to. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to hearing from you soon. #TatumMayor. I have not heard from anybody. And if it's because I'm Commissioner Kennedy, cool. But all in well, this is a proposal to get homeless, poverty, impoverished citizens out of poverty. Thank you very much. You're running with the mayor. Bye-bye.
Sandra Sullivan?
I hope you had a wonderful 4th of July weekend. Sandra Sullivan, Sals Patrick Shores. I want to talk today about the whole attorney and watching the May 5 meeting. And it concerns me greatly. At that meeting, Commissioner Zonka asked, what is this, what is a supermajority when we have a vacancy? The attorney's legal opinion is stated on public record. The one provision I'm thinking of is the charter cap. It says, supermajority of the board. I think a reasonable interpretation is to start with the definition of what the board is. It's a five-member board, even with a vacancy. At that point, it does not change that it is a composition of five members. So a supermajority would still be four. So it went on from there. Commissioner Pritchett suggested contracting outside counsel. The county attorney told the commissioners that they would have legal The county attorney told the commissioners that they would have legal immunity from the consequences of their decisions if they follow the advice coming from the county attorney, but taking guidance from outside counsel could complicate matters. I find it interesting, given a few months ago, that Commissioner Zonka had reminded the attorney while on the dais that she is here at the will of the commission. And I have seen previous occasions here in the four years that certain people have been given direction to resign or, you know, be fired, whatever. So that's a concern. So I'm just going to express on public record my concern, and I will be watching to see what takes place with the new attorney that comes on board, whether a different legal opinion will be issued. And I just want to mention that a statement was also made that if the commission does not follow the legal counsel, that a citizen could take this to the courts and overturn the referendum. Because really, what we're talking about here is the charter cap and the intention to put to referendum to raise property taxes above the 3% cap, to do away with that cap. And I find it very offensive that at least five times I've come up and spoken on public record that impact fees that pay for the share of infrastructure has not been updated in 15, 20 years. And that is really the crux of the matter, is because of what I see is the lobbyists and developer contributions to the political campaigns that ends up responding with elected officials who do not do what is right for the people of Brevard and update impact fees, and then are in turn going to burden the people with the cost of the infrastructure that is needed for all this growth. Thank you, have a wonderful evening.
I usually don't respond to some of the nonsense that comes from Mr. Sullivan, or Mrs. Sullivan's remarks, but I was as surprised as any to hear that Abby was leaving, and I would never ask anybody to resign because I didn't like their opinion or whatever. I was the one that even suggested that we get an Attorney General's opinion on that, and that didn't have anything to do with the charter cap, it actually had to do with more of if this board had initiatives that we wanted to put on the ballot, would we require four votes? And I couldn't find anything myself on it, so I had asked for that information. I was actually pretty disappointed in not just the manner that we found out that Ms. Abigail was leaving by email, and I was more disappointed that we weren't even offered the courtesy of a phone call. So that, to me, was a surprise. But I would never ask someone to resign, and if I thought they were incompetent, or I thought they should leave, I would say so publicly. So that's all, that's all I'll say about that, and that's all the commentary I'll have about that.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Hi, you jumped in, so you made me want to jump in, otherwise I wasn't going to do anything either. I think it's offensive when people that are running for office come up and do all the grandstanding. You, there's just, nobody has any idea what you have to do up here to try to interpret all this stuff and get through it. And so I just, I have a little bit of problem with that. Ms. Jordanby has done a great job, and she can tell you right now, it's not easy dealing with the job you have, or dealing with four personalities, but she's done it very well. And anybody in this position's going to have to deal with us, and they're going to have to go figure things out, because we all have different ideas. And so it's her job by the end of it to come back and to help guide us through some things we want to do. And so appreciate all your work on that, ma'am, but to kind of leave that open end looking like we did something, it's just disgusting, and I just want to say that, and I'll be done.
All right, I have no more public- I have no more public comment cards. All right, moving on to board reports. Mr. Batte?
Excuse me, I have no report.
Ms. Jordanby?
I have no report, but thank you for everything that you have said tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett?
No report.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for calling this special meeting, and again, staff for showing up, greatly appreciate it.
Commissioner Smith?
No report.
And I have no report. I would just like to congratulate Commissioner-elect Mr. Van Vulcanberg, who was elected to the Port Commission, so congratulations, sir, and we hate to see you leave, but, you know, we wish you well.
All right, with that, I call a meeting adjourned.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.